There in the public with those with those numbers. And at that point, some reporters are then not allowing the public to come into their office to look at the original. And that would be an option once we get them back. So back to nineteen eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
So we have nineteen eighty-nine records available on DocCos, which is, you know, out there electronically, and those are redacted. The ones that are sitting on our shelves are not. And I am not allowed to plack those out or move pages to redact them. So until, like I said, we can get, it is a choice then to not allow the public to look at the original.
Is there a project to move further back than eighty-nine?
Yes.
In the image?
And getting these back indexed quicker. Is that a check? Actually, yes, I'm looking at hiring somebody next year, which I have to bring to the county to work after. But eighty-nine is kind of amazing since it was two thousand. It's when we first went to the county. So staff is working really hard. I have someone that is working overtime to try to help me get along. And then I do have a feeler shop to maybe be able to hire somebody through the Recorder's Perpetuation Fund, not cost the county any money that way for that product or project. And because it complies with what I'm allowed to do perpetuation of record, state board and council allow me to do that without having to, you know, having to be able to pay for that out of that fund. But again, I'll bring that before you next year.
What's your, off top of your head, what's your balance in that fund?
Uh, right now, it's about, it's about four hundred thousand, three hundred thousand designated in hell for a disaster. So a train comes through my office or something, so I have to hold that attitude to make sure that I can automatically punch other things.
Yeah.
So there is enough to be able to do that.
Good.
What forms require, like, personal information, like social security numbers and such that the county use, that you have to redact?
Oh, uh, people sometimes are sticking them on deeds or mortgages. On deeds and mortgages. They sometimes, you know, that little select where it has the SS, they'll think that the social security number and actually write it down. We do have affidavits.
Is that required?
Are we, no, no, we just have to make sure it's not in there. There's an affirmation.
Well, on tape, could we just eliminate that need for, take that no sets off of form? So that you wouldn't even put a social security?
Oh, correct, yes, yes, I know. At least it's the forms that come in.
Correct everything going forward?
Yeah, they don't come from my office. They always come from outside sources that create the, create the form themselves. And they're the ones that are doing it. Now, we also have affidavits that will have attached to, that you should think, for example, we know those have social security numbers, and we make sure it's redacted and come over to the county, which is the system.
You know, when I go to the doctor's office or whatever and they ask for a social security number, I don't give it to them. So.
It is still amazing that they show up.
A lot of places will only ask for the last four.
True. And even those will tick off. And it is amazing that they still might show up, and that's the problem. We have to make sure that it does not happen and we flip through. So, yeah, thank you.
Well, this is a bargain at five thousand a year. And, but are you paying for this out of your fund?
Again, that's perpetuation and this is what it's designed for.
Yeah, that's good.
In fact, the entire of my vendor CSI, the computer system, is paid for. I have the Recorder's Perpetuation Fund. Again, that is what it's designated for.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Brooks, motion to redact services and support agreement for the Recorder's office.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor.
Right.
Motion carries.
Connie, are you keeping the original for the moment or? Yeah, if you want to, you can take it over the office table and give you a copy and set the original on my desk.
Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you, everybody.
Next up, Mr. Listrom, county engineer, small structures, two thirteen lower built for a road, Bridge fifty-eight, Wilson Creek.
Todd Listrom, county engineer. We had a bid opening last week. First bid opening for small structure two thirteen lower built for a road. We had four bidders. The low bid was Macalister Escavating Company, Patriot, Indiana, in the amount of four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-five cents. So I'm requesting today that we go ahead and accept that bid in award contract to Macalister Escavating. I have an award letter be signed by all three commissioners as well as an Form ninety-six acceptance letter be signed by all three commissioners. That's the inspection contract that we done separate. I'm just doing the awards right now.
Okay, I didn't see anything again.
You should just got to print us copies sent of who the low bidder, what the bids were and who the low bidder was.
I just had Bridge fifty-eight, I don't have Bridge two thirteen.
Bridge two fifteen.
Or is it?
I hope the engineer agrees with you. I'm gonna have it.
Four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-five cents.
All right. Mr. Goodman, motion to approve the small structure two thirteen on Lower Hills Road in the amount of four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-five cents, as presented by county engineer Todd, Mr. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Sign above your name. Sign next to your name.
In your packet, I thought the short agreement for FPBH was the Form ninety-six. I didn't know it was.
Two different forms, I heard.
Three different forms.
Yep. Okay, next we have the Bridge fifty-eight rehabilitation project of Wilson Creek Road. The bid last week, we had three bids. One of the bids was withdrawn due to airs. So the lowest acceptable bid was for David Amer Contractors in amount of four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars even. There was a alternate for a deduct if we let them close the road instead of doing it under traffic, using temporary traffic signals. That would have saved the county seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty cents for seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty cents. Since that's a back way into the hospital, it is a fairly heavily traveled road. I think for the less amount of savings, it'd be worth to go ahead and keep the base bid and have them install temporary traffic signals and build it under traffic and maintain traffic on Wilson Creek Road. So what I'm asking for is award to David Amer Contractors in the amount of four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars even for Bridge fifty-eight.
I think that question worked for Andy, I think. What's the process where we allow them to withdraw bids?
Todd asked me about it, and what happened was pretty quickly, Todd was notified that Row has had an air with their bidding. And I, I, after checking with colleagues, took the position that they were allowed to withdraw their bid because we couldn't force them to sign a contract. So if we said, oh, we're accepting your bid, then they say, well, our bid was an air, so we're not executing that contract.
It just seems a little.
Yeah.
Definitely different. This is the first one we've ever had happen in my twenty or eighteen-plus years as county engineer.
Trust me, I wish there was a law that said, no, you're bound. But, but it, you know, it's just, a bid is one thing, but getting them to execute a contract is another, and it was a substantial error.
Yeah, obviously. There was air within the bid. Okay.
All right, Mr. Brooks, motion to approve the Wilson Creek Bridge contract in the amount of four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred, no, sorry.
Four hundred and thirty-five.
Yeah, here we go. Four hundred and thirty-five thousand even to David Amer.
David Amer Contractors.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Above your name on that? Next to your name on that? Anything else for us?
Okay. Now we have the FPBH contract that you have in your packet, okay? With the award contract, what I have here are the construction observation and testing agreements with FPBH engineers out of North Burnet, Indiana. First contract for Bridge fifty-eight is not to exceed forty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. Do you want to do these separately or do them together?
I mean, it would be up to the commissioner if wanted to separate, but if their company's doing them all, we can't time that time.
You okay with that?
I'm fine.
Okay. And the second contract is for the observation and testing for small structure two thirteen in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred, not to exceed. So I'm asking that the go ahead and sign the agreement for FPBH. They've done a really, really good job on our previous projects. They've worked for us and find that I'm doing the same job they've always done for us. And when I try to get prices, their prices are a lot lower than most companies. They're very little overhead.
Okay, so it was for Bridge fifty-eight and?
Bridge, small structure two thirteen.
Two thirteen.
Bridge fifty-eight, not to exceed forty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. Small structure two thirteen, not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Any questions? Yeah. All right, Mr. Goodman, motion to approve the FPBH agreement between Dearborn County and the engineering for perpetuation of services from FPBH. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
And there's only one place where the president gives, sorry, that's the contract. So there are.
Just have some, probably promote your name on the floor. Call for him. You got anything else?
Just heads up that next Thursday, our federal aid project for Steepville Road will be let through Endot. So I should know on Thursday afternoon if there's a good bid that we can go ahead and award that project.
Oh, okay.
Then we'll also have, we have a bridge two fifteen, which is Brushport Road, that we'll be letting on the twenty-first of November. So if everything goes well, we'll have one, two. Bridge thirty-three was already left. We'll have three major bridges under construction next spring and summer within the county. So we're starting, trying to catch up on knocking off the list of bridge replacements in the county. So.
Wouldn't the award on the state programs supposed to come out last month?
Community crossings?
Yeah.
Well, last thing I heard is they didn't want to put it out before the election. So I'm hoping here tomorrow, okay? Like the last word that I got, okay, is they didn't want to put it out before the election. So it didn't look like an election politics. So they were holding off. So the election was yesterday. So I'm assuming that it's going to be coming up either end of this week or early next week.
You know, the email you sent me that I was going to be expecting, an email that were something that I had to sign online.
Okay, yes.
I haven't gotten.
Okay, see, okay, they're, they're working on your information to give it to them. Just so everybody knows.
Have you been redacted?
No. We were awarded, it's not a whole lot of money, but it is, it is federal aid funds, a little less than fifteen thousand dollars that next year will be a federal aid contract to the railroad administration through Endot that will be painting all the railroad crossings in the county.
Okay, that's not every other year a thing, is it?
Four. Four, you're allowed one every four years. So our time was up. And I deal with a company that does the little fake work, you know, it's just a, it's basically almost an automatic. We were awarded the funds. What you saw coming.
Usually when I get an email from you.
Usually, and that's, that's through Endot's normal process. I have not heard it.
I didn't want to make sure I didn't miss anything.
No. I have not heard yet from railroad administration, Office of Endot, which is Old Shepherd Section. I haven't heard back from her. I did send all the information. So.
Okay.
Just beware, it's still forthcoming. If I see anything, Jim, that says, okay, it was sent, I'll let you know. But I haven't seen anything yet to send either.
Okay, and then other little project I ask you to look into, is that on your radar too?
It's on my radar.
Okay.
So, other than that.
All right, have a great day.
Thank you.
Twenty twenty-five claims schedule and payroll claims schedule? Is that?
Yeah, you should have gotten a copy of it.
Yeah, I got a copy.
And you guys, you have any problems with those or? Or kind of, all they have to be?
Yeah, it's just a matter of making sure it meshes with the VOCs.
And we did that.
Why don't we approve both claim schedules, payroll claim schedule, VOC meeting schedule?
We need to talk about the VOC meeting schedule. The new commissioner wants to have some of them. So we may need to, we need to table that till January.
So approving the other two schedules doesn't, he doesn't want to change the dates. He wants to change the time to a later time.
Okay. We're just getting to the end. Okay, so.
Make it earlier.
Amen.
Just trying to be accommodating. So Connie, are you going to present on that or just?
I think you guys just need to.
Just approve my twenty twenty-five claim schedule and payroll claim schedule. Okay. Mr. Brooks, motion to approve the claim schedule and payroll claim schedule, which you have kind of overseen.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And then Mr. Goodman, motion to table the board of commissioners' meeting schedule until the first meeting in January, allowing the new incoming commissioner to have that included to schedule.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, discussion on the Aurora Life Squad EMS representative appointment that Aurora had requested the commissioner become part of their board overseeing Aurora EMS. Mr. Brooks, I'll leave that up to you.
Well, I, I just, I appreciate their request that we appoint someone on their board directors. I would like to return the letter and ask that they change it such that the commissioners are authorized to appoint a representative of the board of commissioners, not necessarily a commissioner.
Okay.
I guess I could make a motion.
I was going to say you all make a motion to that.
The county administrator to send a letter to the board of directors of the Aurora Emergency Rescue, requesting that their invitation be adjusted to allow the county commissioners to appoint one representative to their board and not specifically a commissioner.
Okay.
With that change, we can appoint a commissioner. It also gives us the option to appoint a resident subject matter expert. So I want, you got a motion to authorize to send a letter?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Ms. Haynes, you have anything for us?
I do not.
Ms. Roble, claims?
Yeah.
Okay, motion to, I think I did a motion.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the claims, Mr. Brooks?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Paper. Mr. Goodman, motion to approve paper.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Minutes?
Yeah, October fifteenth.
Listen, approve the Dearborn County Board of Commissioners' meeting minutes, October, for October fifteenth, three twenty-four.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Biden, does, you have anything for us?
Uh, yes. So I have for you amendment to our ARPA agreements with Dearborn County Regional Sewer District. The, at auditor's conference, Connie talked to some people with state board accounts, and we have been told all through this process that any funds allocated for a qualifying project that were not expended could then be reallocated when they were returned to the county. So a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the Lake Ildear project is a contingency, and then six, six twenty-seven, oh, just over six twenty-seven for Guilford. So right now, we have just over three quarter, or three quarters of a million dollars as contingency in those projects that are ARPA funds. And the concern is that if those funds are not expended, if they don't end up needing to use all those funds and for, you know, all those contingency funds, the money gets returned to us and we wouldn't be able to reallocate them. So what the amendment would do is the DCRSD would return the contingency amount only from each project to the county. We would then allocate those funds so that we don't risk losing them. And then the county council would then allocate out of general the same amount so that they get that money back.
To fulfill the contingency back.
So they get that money back from, they get that money back from county general. We get the ARPA funds back so that we can, so we don't run the risk of losing them.
We've already talked to Todd, he's got something, I mean, already coming out of county general that will just replace that money. So it's just a trade.
Too much.
So we met last week with Stu and Brett Fairman from the DCRSD, and Steve Runningham was on the phone also, and we reviewed all this. And so what we would be doing is, the amendments are here today. DCRSD meets Thursday night. I sent these amendments to them yesterday morning. Council meets on the fourteenth. And what our thought, our plan would be is to have council approve these also, but they actually wouldn't be able to do their allocation until December because the window to get that allocation in for the November meeting had already passed. But go ahead and approve the amendment so that the DCRSD can rest easy knowing that everybody's approved the amendment, and then we'll do the allocation in December. So it's just some accounting so that we don't lose three quarters of a million dollars.
Good.
So it would be amendment number one to the ARPA grant agreement between Dearborn County and the Dearborn County Regional Sewer District for both the Lake Ildear project and the Guilford project.
Motion to approve the ARPA amendment contract for Lake Ildear and Guilford. What else? As presented by Mr. Williams.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then just as an update, I did email, we discussed this a little bit before. I did email Bill Rethman and Carl Petty. They're both on the Dearborn County Hospital Transition Committee. We're going to have some stuff for them to do as we close out Dearborn County Hospital. And I did ask them if they have somebody that they might recommend to fill that third seat on Dearborn County Hospital Transition Committee. There's going to be plats and deeds that will need signed. There's a report from Blue and Company that, for a DSH, what, a DSH report?
DSH.
DSH report. They've got a report coming that'll need to be signed. So I've emailed Bill and Carl and given them that update, and again, asked them if they might have a name to recommend to the commissioners to fill that third seat because we're going to have some stuff. Hopefully, coming up soon to transfer the property to San Francisco.
I believe it when I see it.
Are we still, or have we received any invoices or bills from Blue and Company?
Oh, yeah.
Are we about done with them?
Not quite yet. Alan and I had a conference call with them the other day.
Okay.
And I think, I think I have updated you, but the plan is going to be that the apartment up there will be kept on land owned by the county just because, saying he.
So we own the land and who owns the apartment?
CMHC. Well, housing, the housing development for CMHC. It's that, it's that parking complex there. It's on, they were, they have a like ninety-nine yearly agreement for a dollar a year because of.
With who?
With the county.
With the county.
Because of federal regulations, saying he wouldn't be able to honor the dollar a year amount.
Yeah, right.
So, and so that, that piece would stay with the county. John Johnson from the city's reviewed that, and they're all fine with that, with them having access. He had a question about their, the city ordinance at this time now requires at least two parking spaces per unit.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But I, I guess Jordan at State Surveying looked into it, and there's enough space there if they have to draw lines on the concrete. But hopefully, that's all coming to a close.
Okay.
Thank you.
Connie, we, we got an estimate from, from Blue and Company.
Was it like forty-something thousand?
Yeah, that, what they. Yeah, that, that what they thought we might still have.
Yeah.
Is that it? We think that'd be close. Yeah, that's what we thought, because we asked them for, you know, how much longer it's going to fall down.
And he was saying to Sydney Allen about turning it in, even if they needed, they said, your numbers are too low. He said, we have way more than that, so we can fit that, that report.
Right.
He said he didn't see the problem.
Yeah, we, we, as far as the underinsured or, we had spent way more money than.
Yeah.
The county hospital, so.
All right, moving on, is there any late arrival information? Hearing none, is there a public comment? Uh, Mr. Brooks, commissioner comments?
Since the election's over, I'd like to, uh, thank the election workers, the folks who volunteered with the S and T board, uh, for the last month and then the folks who showed up and worked long day yesterday at the different polling locations. I think we averaged about five hundred persons per day in the, uh, in-person early voting. That's a long, hard day. And a little different than what we've seen in the past. It's good to see that turnout for election. Makes those election workers all that much more important. I also, as a second point, I'd like to congratulate the Lawrenceburg Women's Soccer, High School Soccer Team, women's or girls or whatever we call it, uh, on winning the state championship in their division. That's a good deal.
Good one.
And that's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Goodman, you have anything for us?
No, I don't have anything.
All right, um, you, I, I just want to recognize all the voters in Durbin County who turned out to, uh, do their civic duty and, and voice their, make their voices heard. Uh, I think we're going to end up with this particular election, uh, over eighty percent of the folks that, uh, are on the voting rolls showed up to vote, and I think that's a, a great thing. I watched the entire process, I was up till about three-thirty, um, to see what the outcomes were coming to end up being. I think it's, uh, it's just great to see the country vote their opinion. All right, uh, Mr. Brooks, motion to.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.